It's six oh four ready, we're late. If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please, I'm sorry we're just a few minutes late getting started tonight. But if we could ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, then I'd like to ask Ms. Polly Singer-Eardley to leave us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the room?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Singer-Eardley?
Here.
Ms. Lesney?
Here.
Mr. Shaw Walter?
Here.
Mrs. Single-Sane?
Here.
And Mrs. Tuckett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Good. You'll notice that, well, thank you for having a full house tonight, full attendance of the council. And you'll notice we've got a relatively short agenda for the meetings we've had most of the time. And I told the staff just not to worry that it was a short agenda, that we've had some very long meetings and we will occasionally have a shorter meeting. And this can give us as much time as we need for any conversation. So to begin the meeting, each of you have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of February the twenty-seventh. If you could look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
May I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented?
Thank you, motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded.
Doesn't matter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also in your packet each of you should have received, and you definitely received this time, a copy of your check register, the latest check register that we've issued. If everyone could indicate they've received a copy of that report. Thank you. And that gets us to the portion of our meeting for public comments. And as is typically the case, we'll take public requests for comments, just in the order that people have signed up for those, and work our way through that process. First on the agenda, on the agenda... Well, sometimes my country twang, just can't...
There's more than a twang.
Well, a little lighthearted start to the meeting there. On the agenda, we would first call for Pastor Dan Estes and Father Lynn to discuss... Is Father Lynn with you today, or has he left you high and dry?
He has a five-thirty service at church, so I don't think he's gonna make it.
Okay.
Even though he can run, he's a pretty swift guy.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is. But I understand you all have a request and...
Pastor Dan Estes, like Estes Park, Colorado.
All right.
Pastor Church of the Crossing, but here representing the pastors and priests of Georgetown. We have things that we provide for the community, Easter, Thanksgiving. On Good Friday, we've been indoors at the college chapel. We'd like to do a Good Friday service at, it's twelve fifteen to twelve fifty, just outside of the county courthouse, just outside of our doors here, on Good Friday, April fourteenth. I think you have the application and all that's needed there.
So we have all of the proper documentation and the liability coverage has been confirmed.
Yes.
So it'd be a simple request in an ecumenical way...
Yeah.
To have a Good Friday service on our courthouse square.
That would be correct. We'll bring in a, I think the Southland Christians are gonna bring in a platform, which they have several that they use, a six by three and a half, just to give the speaker and what other things, we have some height over the people. There'll be a sound system set up, so we'll need some electricity. But other than that, it's gonna be a short, hopefully the people that, the courthouse shuts down at noon on Good Friday, I'm hoping they'll stay for the brief service, but it should be a very special time.
Good. I was just gonna confirm, we will need to close Court Street.
Yeah. I suppose since it's one-way, just off of Main Street, just the, coming into the parking lot, maybe by eleven o'clock or something.
Sounds good. Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
And that was a second.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded that council authorized this Good Friday event. If there are no further questions for Dan, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good, if you see Father Lynn out there sprinting, give him a heads up. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Let's see. Next on the sign-in sheet is Kelly Kleber, is that correct? On behalf of her daughter Brittany Martin, please.
Appreciate you all giving me the opportunity. Won't take just a few minutes. If you don't know me, my name is Kelly Kleber. My family and I've lived here in Scott County for over twenty years. Until a few weeks ago, I wasn't aware of the Georgetown feminist organization's request of the city council to add the four words, sexual orientation and gender identity, to the city's existing civil rights law as it applies to nondiscrimination policy. However, after listening to Dr. Hambrick address the city council two weeks ago, I decided to reach out to tell my daughter's story with the hope of helping others. My daughter served at the city of Georgetown as employee of the nine-one-one center for three years. She made the decision to move to Florida in February of two thousand sixteen, so she resigned from her position then. She moved to St. Cloud and served as a telecommunicator for the Osceola County Sheriff's Department while she was there. The move was short-lived, and in August she decided to return to her hometown to be near family. She reapplied with the city and was offered her job as a telecommunicator with the city of Georgetown Center once again. She immediately began the search for affordable housing that would accommodate her family. I vividly remember the message she sent me with all the pictures because she was so excited that she'd found the perfect place. It was a three-bedroom, two-bath duplex with a small yard and a one-car garage for seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a month, well within her budget. It was perfect for them. She had several conversations with the property owner, both by phone and via email. She filled out required paperwork, paid the application fee, and received confirmation from the owner that the property was officially hers. When I say emails, there were approximately fifteen emails back and forth. She also had an additional telephone conversation after all of those communications where she disclosed to the, that the other person living in the home was her female partner. Brittany promptly received an email from the property owner telling her that she had decided to go with another applicant, even after taking her application fee confirming that the property was hers. Once that conversation took place, it was completely off the table. We knew that what had tipped the scale in the other direction began researching the laws as they applied to discrimination. We quickly discovered that there was nothing we could do to hold this property owner accountable. We had absolutely no recourse since current federal and state and federal laws do not consider sexual orientation or gender identity a protected class. Because of her sexual orientation, Brittany experienced many of the things Dr. Hambrick referred to when he previously addressed the council, such as rates of anxiety, depression, suicide ideation, and completed suicide being astronomically higher than those within the straight community. I can't speak on the economic impact of the measure, but I can speak on the humanity aspect of it. Brittany served not only the city of Georgetown, but the citizens of Georgetown. She always stood up for what was right. She always stood up for those afraid to stand up for themselves. She always reached out to provide a helping hand to those in need. I know this is a measure that would be of great importance to her. Unfortunately, Brittany no longer has a voice. She became one of those documented statistics and committed suicide just a month ago. That's why I'm here tonight. I heard countless stories at her visitation about how she had impacted people's lives, about her level of law enforcement, and her dedication to her job, and about her heart for other people. It was more than obvious that she was well respected by the city's first responders, as well as her peers. One young lady I didn't know came to me, stood beside the casket, and told me, as her voice caught, that Brittany always took up for her when she was bullied at school. High profound. Isn't that, I believe that that's our responsibility as a city, through the ordinance as we put in place, that we allow diversity and we lend a voice and protection for those who experience fear and discrimination and may not be able to stand up for themselves. Every single person deserves to be treated with respect. On behalf of Brittany, I would ask that the members of the city council grant the request to add the word sexual orientation and gender identity to the existing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments on behalf of your daughter. We haven't gotten to speak since the visitation, but we're very sorry for your loss, and we are very proud of the service that Brittany gave to the city of Georgetown.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Virginia McKinnon? McKinney? Thank you.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, I'm here representing the extension, Scott County Extension Office, the Master Gardeners, and the Garden Club of Scott County. We are well aware of the conflict that has happened, notification by the, to the state that's caused the gates to the community garden to be closed. And in order for us, last year our Master Gardeners raised over four hundred, over enough produce to give away four hundred pound of free food to the needy to this city. Plus, we're hoping that if we can get those gates or whatever, get that reconciled so that we can get in there as soon as possible and start our gardens. Because right now, the way it is, it's locked. We can't, we have no access to it. And I'm representing not only the Master Gardeners and the Garden Club, but the people of Scott County that raise the gardens depend on this for food. And so we, I'm here representing to try to find out if there's been any reconciliation, any discussion, or will there be?
There have been significant number of conversations about this issue. Primarily last year, when we, we started seeing evidence of illegal dumping back there.
We know.
Actually, the area was inspected by the state because of this illegal dumping. And we put up the gates because frankly, we had little choice but to put up the gates. Now, just today, Robert Bruin, our Director of Public Works, myself, Andrew, and others talked about this issue. And in fact, I think Robert has spent some time talking with Sharon in your office. What Robert has suggested is, we do think that we're gonna have to, we do think that we're under an obligation to keep the gates locked. Right now, some people have been driving around the fence, which means we're probably, we are gonna have to extend the fence back to secure the area, as is our responsibility to do. What Robert has suggested is that we use a two-padlock system. One padlock owned by the extension service or the Master Gardeners, and one lock that our Public Works Department will keep. And we're happy to undo our lock each day and make that accessible for folks that need access to where your Garden Club members and people who want to work the earth would then have access to the other padlock, which could give you access through the gate. So we've recognized your request. We've tried to respond to our responsibilities, but we think we can work out a solution that can get the gardeners to their plots.
We sat there the other night and tried to figure out how, how do you do this with keys? Because no one person can stand there all day long with a key. And I truthfully called last year the Sheriff's Department, and there was a nice little fancy blue pickup truck loaded with trash going back there. I would recognize him again if I see him, and he won't go back there if I see him.
We are aware of your issue, and we would be glad to sit with you and Sharon and our Public Works Director and find a way that lets us address our responsibilities, but still gives you all the access that you need.
I mean, we understand that, we just didn't know how far it had gone, and we've been trying to get ahold of Sharon today, and she's out of the office.
Okay.
So the other two that are supposed to be here, Molly, Polly, they're all sick. You all pass it off to her. But okay, I'll take this back, we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow about twelve-thirty.
Yeah, did you have something?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I had to ask Robert, he came up with the two-lock system, and I didn't understand it at first, but if you think about it, the locks are like links in a chain. So if you got one link here, and then you got your lock, and then our lock, and then another lock, all it takes is one, one lock to be unlocked. So we don't have to be there to unlock ours. We can unlock it to get ours open, we lock it back, and you all can unlock it to open yours, and then you lock it back. So anybody who has a key to one of those two locks would have access. So what we've suggested is you get one lock with lots of keys, and you only give them to your members.
And you can control your lock.
Right. And who goes in and out?
I think that's, I don't know, we tried to figure out how we could do that the other night with the quantity, I mean, the Master Gardeners will have two plots out there this town. I'll have one running for, hopefully for early spring through summer through fall. We're gonna try that through one row this year, but the other one will only be, you know, just the summer.
And it may be that the lock for your organization may need to be a combination lock, to where you can share that combination with more people.
We've discussed that one too. I told them I'd even purchase, I'd even purchase that lock for them if they needed me to.
So we do appreciate your concern, and hopefully you understand our concern.
Oh, we understand, we just don't, you know, we're just trying to figure, how can we get in there and get it done and make everybody else happy too?
Well, if your ears were burning, we were talking about you today.
Was that why I had a headache? Thank you all very much.
We appreciate you bringing it to the council. Uh, let's see. Mr. Stephen Price?
I'm Stephen Price, I live at one-six-seven Rucker Avenue in Georgetown. And by coincidence, I founded the Community Garden Program in Georgetown originally, and then they, they decided to call it Georgetown Scott County Community Garden Program. And what I'm here tonight to say would bind, or would apply to the perpetrators who haul trash seeking a destination to illegally dump it. Because what I'm talking about here tonight is the consumer habits that generate the trash without any intent to manage the trash at home. And, and that's why we have this trash problem, that's why there's gonna be this meeting tomorrow night about the landfill. We have a consumer, we have a whole society based on consumerism, and as opposed to hands-on management of materials. And I wanna read, show you a book I've been reading. This, this is a book by Carl Hurley. May know Carl Hurley, he's a comedian, sometimes see him on TV. And he resides in Lexington now, he grew up in Rockcastle County, near London. And he wrote this book, it's called, "We Weren't Poor, We Just Didn't Have Any Money." And he describes his growing up there on a three-acre homestead in Rockcastle County. And I just wanna briefly read a little piece of it here. "I grew up in the foothills of the Appalachian Mountains in the forties and fifties. We lived very much like people had for decades, close to the land. Grew almost all our own food, wore homemade clothes, spending money was a rarity. Most people didn't have electricity or an automobile. The Great Depression, it ended sometime back, but we didn't get word of it, not for years. So we went on living the way we'd always lived. Most homes didn't have central heat, they didn't have running water either, or inside plumbing. I've heard Uncle Arlo laugh and say many times, 'You couldn't find ten dollars in this whole community, not if you used a high sheriff with a pocketful of search warrants.' But if you had said we were poor, we would have been highly insulted. We weren't poor, we just didn't have any money." And on the next page, he says, "No, we didn't have any money, but we were rich in the things that really matter. There was always a good supper on the table, we never worried about our next meal, we never had to worry if we were loved, we had sets of grandparents close by, we had enough aunts and cousins to fill a football stadium, we were a close family." And back here, he, he says, "Growing up on a hillside farm wasn't easy. Our food came mostly from the land, all of it was a product of hard work, and I mean really hard work by the whole family. In the spring, we planted a large garden, we planted everything edible, you could can, anything you couldn't can, but could dry, and anything you couldn't dry but could preserve. Mom stayed busy during the growing season, putting up food, you can believe we ate well." All right, there's a description of subsistence farming that, or subsistence homesteading, I should say, which existed seventy miles down the road here in Rockcastle County, apparently through the fifties. And I wanna read to you from Alexander Hamilton, who...
Can you, we appreciate the literature lessons, but, but can you get to your point?
Yeah, the point, yes, sir, the point is, Mayor Prather, and this is what Hamilton's, Hamilton is, this is a Federalist paper, you may know that Hamilton and his peers drafted the Federalist Papers in subsequent to the revolution, American Revolution, as a new nation was being formed. And, and all these so-called enlightened souls, including Hamilton, Jefferson, Franklin, Franklin was old by that time, but, but his, the peers of Hamilton and Jefferson, let's say, were writing a lot of letters about what, how the new nation would, would take form, what it would be like. And here's what, here's what Hamilton says, just briefly. Well, let me, let me just say, I don't wanna bore you with literary, another literary lesson, I'll tell you what he said. He said, "No nation will accept going back to live like the peasants, so they must have revenue. Without revenue, they will live like peasants." Okay, Carl Hurley grew up as a peasant, and he's proud of it. He didn't need revenue, didn't have revenue, didn't pay much tax, if any. And, and I'm saying to you that because Hamilton won the day in, on the east coast, in the founding of this nation, and a system based on banking and finance, we have a consumer culture. And this consumer culture generates a lot of trash. And, and that's what I'm trying to say, is that because of these so-called enlightened souls who organize society and basically give orders to society, but never have their hands on any materials. And, and that's why we have these immense problems, like chemicals in the food, trash unmanageable, waste of electricity, waste of water, all kinds of problems, because the people who are calling the shots do not work in the outdoors with materials. And I'm gonna say one other thing, and I'll get down from here. I've been studying the word, truck, the definition of truck, I run across, in the reading I do, truck farming was a basic subsistence pattern for a lot of people in the early days of this country. Truck farming does not derive, the word doesn't come from, like pickup truck, it comes from the French word troqué, T-R-O-Q-U-E-R, which means to swap or to trade and, or to barter. So farming, truck farming was a common practice in this nation, and, and I know less about, at the moment, about this specific area Georgetown, but what I'm gonna say to you is if you wanna solve problems like this lady mentioned, go home, each of you, set a good example for the community by making your homestead a truck farm. And exchange with your neighbors, encourage your neighbors to exchange with their neighbors, spend your time in the garden instead of shopping, and what you take from the garden won't have any packaging, so you won't have a trash problem. And you can reuse the jars to can again, canning jars, mason jars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list for public, public comments, Kyle Fannin?
Actually, no comments tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Well, good, that completes the public comments.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
PCA was doing their five K on April, sometime in April, they want to move that date to August the nineteenth.
I understood they had a conflict with their original date, is that right?
Yes, they did, so they would like to know if the council would approve them go to August the nineteenth instead. Everything's still the same, they just need to change the date.
Motion, Mayor?
Motion's been made, seconded?
Thanks, Tracy.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done.
I first, I made a motion.
You first did it?
I first did it.
Okay.
I did.
Okay. Now we're to the, the portion of the meeting that much of the council has fun chuckling about, and that's the mayor comments. And it's, it's a part of the meeting where we have an opportunity to update the council on a number of initiatives that are going on and, and processes that are going on. And I've got these in no particular order, but I wanted to remind the council that we have agreed to, again, be a co-host of the Household Hazardous Waste Day that is sponsored by Toyota. We've all got certain things in our garage that we, we wonder how to get rid of, pesticides, insecticides, things that are not appropriate for a landfill, but yet we want to have a safe place to put them. The city and the county and Toyota go together and jointly sponsor a hazardous waste day. This day it will be on Saturday, May thirteenth, for anyone who has materials in their home. This would be true of computer monitors, television sets, batteries, any of the things that normally are a bother to get rid of.
Paint.
Stuff like that.
Paint, solvents. All of those things. And we negotiated a slightly longer day, and it'll be extended by one hour. And we've also made a policy change to where we're now attempting to have this hazardous waste day every year. It used to be an every-other-year thing, but the demand has been so great for people to have a ready place to get rid of these materials, that's gonna be done each year. Now, because this has been like many of our programs, we're having some success problems with our growth and with people being aware of these opportunities, more and more people are taking advantage of them. To make that hazardous day work well, the city has been asked to increase its annual allocation for this day from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. Toyota is, or the county is going to match that increase, and whatever the costs are beyond that, which are significantly more than ten thousand dollars, Toyota will pay for. So since this is an increase, and it's right at the dollar amount where we normally ask for council action, we wanted to bring that to the council and see if the council is in favor of continuing this on an annual basis, and if the council is comfortable with raising our contribution to ten thousand dollars.
Need a motion for that?
Please.
Motion?
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded. Any questions?
Which line item are you planning on taking, being able to take the extra five thousand from?
We, we believe that we can do it in a professional services line item, which is probably where it would fit well, anyway. Given our, given the fact that we just adopted an amended budget, we wanted to be careful about that, but we believe we can fit this entire amount into an existing line item. Good.
Mayor, what about the time of day, and I said Toyota, right?
Yes.
It usually starts at nine o'clock, doesn't it?
I think it's nine until...
Two?
Two.
Yeah, that's what it normally is.
It used to be nine to one, and I think we've extended it to nine to two. The Friday is, I think, dedicated for Toyota employees, and then the Saturday is for community residents. For those of you that have not used this service and you'd like to consider it, it is so simple that you don't even have to get out of your truck or your car. If you've got stuff in the trunk... If you've got stuff in the trunk, uh, the, if you pull up, the workers will unload your truck or unload your car. Uh, the first station may be paint and solvents, and they'll get those things out and then wave you down, and you'll drive a little further, and you'll get to a pesticides, and they'll pick all those out, and it goes into one particular area, uh, but, and then, then a, a stop for electronics. But you don't even have to get out of your vehicle, and you can get rid of the ugliest stuff in your basement or your garage.
And the date again is?
Uh, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth.
Mm-hmm. Uh, also, uh, just, uh, many of you were there today, but we did hear from Judge Lesby, and as he gave the state of the county address today.
You got a first and second, I don't think you took the vote.
Oh, do we never vote?
No, we didn't.
Let's vote to spend ten thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With the little help from the council, we make it through parliamentary procedure.
Yes.
Uh, Judge's state of the county address today, I think, had some real exciting news, uh, for the city, and, uh, things that we will be working on in, in the coming year. Uh, some improvements that they clearly have in mind for the ambulance service. Uh, the judge talked at some length about the county being our partner, uh, in the infrastructure improvements for Lanes Run Business Park. So, uh, now that the judge has confirmed that yet again, that the county will be our partner in that very significant economic development project, uh, we hope to be bringing you what that plan will look like within the next month or so. Also, in the interest of it being springtime and us having community pride, we have set the date of April the twenty-first for our Main Street Clean Suite cleanup. And we've always had, uh, a great event on that day when we, we dispatched people with garbage bags and gloves all over town to, to pick up trash and debris and just raise awareness within the community of, we should have pride in the place that we call home. Uh, so Main Street Clean Suite will be on April the twenty-first, and we'll try and let you know later about more specific plans and times where you could volunteer for a particular project, uh, on that. We're going to follow that up with, uh, a special tree planting on Arbor Day, in honor of Arbor Day, which is April the twenty-eighth. So, again, trying to draw awareness to, to that part of our community life. While there are difficulties in achieving it, I've always, uh, dreamed of seeing our streetscape downtown have more trees, have more green.
Yay. Yay, Steve.
I get that very often, you better take that one.
Now, the, the inherent difficulties, our city streets are right on top of utilities and lots of lines and lots of things that we have to be concerned about, but urban forest matter, and they soften landscapes, they soften street shapes, and I think that as we work to beautify our downtown and our community, that Steve's right, street trees are a good thing. Also, wanted just to remind, uh, everyone that may be watching or listening that, uh, tomorrow evening is the Scott County Board of Adjustments hearing, uh, which will be held at the high school auditorium. Uh, and I, I believe the purpose of that hearing is, uh, for the Scott County Board of Adjustments to determine if, uh, Joe Kane's, uh, more current letter will be upheld concerning the landfill expansion, or will Earl Smith's prior letter, uh, be upheld. Uh, so, just want you all to be aware of that. Uh, our attorney, our outside counsel, uh, is, is not going to appear at this hearing and has advised me and the city attorney, and by extension, you all not to attend. I think there's little you can add to the hearing. Uh, should you wish to just simply go listen, that's your right to do so, uh, but any position that, uh, our legal position, or any future legal position that we may take, take as a counsel, will not be compromised by not appearing tomorrow night. So we have, we have verified that, that our position will not be weakened by not being there tomorrow night. And we're not directly involved in those proceedings, so just wanted to have that word, uh, for the council. Uh, the other thing that, that I think it's extremely important that, that we talk about tonight is the, the proposed fairness ordinance, um, consideration of which was requested by a group of citizens that came before our last council meeting. And I thought it would, it would, it is my responsibility to, to, uh, talk with the council about how we will proceed down this path of consideration, uh, and, and do so in a way that lets both those who are supportive of this measure in the community, or anyone who may have reservations about this approach from the community, so everyone knows the process that we'll use. Just a couple of observations first. I believe that Dr. Hambrick, uh, very accurately summarized many of the points, uh, at your last council meeting. However, from the council's perspective and the way that we must respond as elected officials of the community, um, to drill down a little deeper into the request, uh, I agree that the simple element of this is adding four words to our existing protections, uh, gender identity and sexual orientation. From our practical perspective of how we work with an ordinance that achieves that, it's more complicated than simply adding four words to an existing ordinance. And if we're going to have a full and open conversation about this, I, it's my job to make sure that the council and the public understands step by step everything that we're considering and everything that might be in an ordinance, so that you all are dealing from a position of complete knowledge, and there's no unsettling whoops, I didn't know that, or that's not what I thought. It's a serious enough issue to where we've got to do it well. In order to do that, uh, what I've asked Andrew, uh, and we, we've had some folks volunteer from, from the community to help us with eagle, either legal drafts or legal interpretations. But as our council, I've asked Andrew to take the proposed, we do, we do not have a draft ordinance for you to consider. Let me cut right to the chase. We do not have an ordinance to present to you for first reading of the ordinance. We intend to get there, but we're not there tonight. And what I've asked Andrew to do is to, to be in a position at our next council meeting to take a draft ordinance that has been suggested for our consideration, not to be confused with our ordinance that we're bringing you. But let Andrew walk us through that draft so we can understand what is in a fairness ordinance. What are the issues that the council needs to focus on to make their right decision on behalf of our citizens? For example, at our last meeting, I was operating under the impression that a hearing body for any complaint that was lodged in Georgetown would be the State Human Rights Commission. And it turns out, the State Human Rights Commission hears all manner of human rights violations, except for the four words that we want to talk about. So the State Human Rights Commission will not be the vehicle for enforcement. Instead, we will need to, we've had a human rights commission since nineteen seventy-nine. It has been inactive. I don't know of anyone who is currently appointed to a human rights commission, but these are the things that I'm, we're going to get answers for you, so the council understands and the public understands about how this works and what the implications are for citizens, businesses, employers, people seeking protection. If we have those conversations and we have a fully informed council, then I'm confident we will reach the right decision about what we've been asked to consider. But I do think we need to go through this process. I would expect that at the next meeting, if, if Andrew can lead us through that detailed conversation about what elements are in fairness ordinances, and, and the key points that you need to make decisions on as council members, then we can be in a position of taking your questions and your feedback and what we may have heard from the public, uh, from Reverend Fox and Dr. Hambrick, Ms. Cloud and others. Uh, and we will actually prepare a draft of an ordinance for the council's consideration. Now, typically, when we've approached an issue of this magnitude, so far, in, in our short term, uh, we, we, we've all been here just over two years in, in these most recent terms, it, it is an initiative that, that we have come up with, and we typically have spent months wrestling with and studying. In this case, this was an issue that was brought to us. So we haven't done that much homework yet. We are going to learn with the council and, and develop our understanding. But I do think that we will move expeditiously toward an ordinance that we have drafted for the council to drill down and think about specifically. And we'll have an appropriate public process, and then there will be an opportunity for the council to speak their mind. There'll be an opportunity at second reading for the council to vote on that ordinance. But I just wanted to assure everybody in the room and everybody that might be watching that we will undertake this in a methodical, thorough way, so that when we ask the council to act, you can do so with as much confidence as is possible.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You said you were going to bring a dra- you're going to write, you all are writing, Andrew's writing the draft, or you're bringing a draft?
We're, we were all provided with, with a packet of information, and that included a, a sample ordinance. That's a good place for us to start. It's not our, an ordinance of our drafting, but it is an ordinance that we can begin to disassemble, so that every council member understands what the components of a fairness ordinance would look like.
Okay. Could I ask for, uh, was brought up last time that there was eight cities or eight cities, seven cities that are-
Seven or eight in Kentucky.
Could we get a copy of each of their ordinances?
Yes. We, we also, this intervening time, we, we know that the Kentucky League of Cities probably has a fair amount of information about this topic, since seven or eight cities may have passed the ordinance, but I know a whole lot more cities have at least begun the conversation. So I'd like to find out what KLC has that they can help us with, and would be glad to provide copies of any ordinance that we can get our hands on.
And I'd also like to have a copy of our existing human, human rights ordinance, that we've got a copy of that. I'm sure that's old.
Our website.
Okay. And then do, so we've got a human rights committee.
Human rights commission.
Commission, okay. Um-
In, it exists on paper.
There's an ordinance to set that up.
Yes.
Can I have, get a copy of that ordinance? And the other cities that we get orders from, assume all of them have a humans rights committee as well?
Those are things we need to find out. I think it's a good assumption, but I think we need to verify everything.
If you could, if you could find out whether they do or not, and then how they're set up and, and what they're involved with as well. That's for starters. I'll take us, I'll take us another step.
Well, and, and those are baseline documents that I think would, uh, would help your understanding and help you as we begin to craft our own draft for consideration. Is there other information that the council, uh, other than what Karen's mentioned, some of these baseline documents that you would, you particularly like to see?
Think it's a good start.
Yeah.
It's, it's a good start, uh, and, and let me say again that, that I continue to be impressed with, with this council's ability to discuss difficult issues. You've done it for two-plus years now. I'm confident we, we will discuss this issue and many others, uh, as we move forward. And I'm confident that our council will, will make this conversation respectful and dignified. I see no intent, no reason why that would, uh, ever be any different. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best as we deal with, uh, deal with this issue and we deal with any members of the public, that we focus on the responsibilities of the city council. And those responsibilities are clear, uh, that, that we, we have a responsibility to protect all of our citizens. I continue to believe strongly personally that it is not our responsibility to determine what is moral and what might be a sin. Uh, that's done somewhere outside of these chambers, somewhere far above us. But we have an opportunity and a responsibility to protect citizens, and that's where I hope that our focus will be as, as we continue this conversation. So I would expect this topic to be on our agenda on an ongoing basis for the ne- next month or so while we work through this process. And I, I think we should anticipate a continuing conversation, uh, until we, uh, address the request that's been brought to us. And if everybody's okay with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, uh, or we can move to the rest of this very short agenda. Thank y'all. Again, happy to have folks stay for a civic lesson, but we've got a pretty boring agenda tonight. But we do have, uh, under, under the city attorney's portion of the agenda, a resolution approving a hazard mitigation plan. Uh, this is part of a much larger regional hazard mitigation plan that the Bluegrass Area Development District has put together. This is simply the Scott County portion of that hazard mitigation plan. Uh, if we pass it, we're eligible for certain grants. Uh, if we don't pass it, we're not eligible for certain grants, so, uh, I think-
Any, any fee of money at all.
Any fee of money at all. So, uh, you have a copy of that resolution in your packet, but it's just that straightforward.
You want a motion or you want to read it? Motion.
Motion.
Second.
And second, thank you. So, uh, all in favor of the resolution approving the hazard mitigation plan, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You also received a handout, I, I think tonight, uh, showing the, uh, the entrance to the city from Frankfurt, uh, showing the, uh, the big lot where Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service just bought the additional property and cleared that lot. We have been asked to provide, uh, an easement to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, uh, for the Kentucky Wired Project. You, you've read a lot of publicity about the state, uh, trying to build a digital backbone, uh, that, that will go pretty much to the center of the state. Then there are going to be projects for the, what's called the middle mile, uh, and then ultimately, communities like ours or private companies will provide the final mile. Uh, this would be a part of the infrastructure for the middle mile. It seemed like a no-brainer to me that we would grant that easement to facilitate, uh, the Kentucky Wired Project getting the middle mile part of this infrastructure, internet infrastructure put in place.
There's actually four easements. That, that was just an addition. Yeah. There's four pieces of property that we own that are-
All right. If you would, uh, lead us through those.
I, I think the first one is there, uh, right across from the water company. One is in the business park, the north part of the business park. Um, one is right there by the fire station, uh, 101 Airport Road, and the- And the fourth one is... Where is that fourth one? We've also got representative here from the Commonwealth who can guide us through that. There's only three, there should be four. Four, right? There's four.
There's two right there by the...
Well, that's right. The fourth one is on the corner of Haynes Depot and 460.
Gentlemen, I probably was pretty clumsy with my explanation. Do you all need to further enlighten the council before we ask for this?
I don't believe so. I think you handled it well, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
We did another one of these easements in 2015 over at Osford Landing. I mean, it's literally easements across the telephone pole.
Motion. Motion's been made, thank you. And second? Let's tack it. That's the new stylized second. If there are any questions for... We have our experts in the back. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gentlemen, thank you all. Sorry to make you wait. Yes, sir. Thank you all. We appreciate your help with this. And now my favorite part of the meeting, we're down to city council comments. So where shall we start? Mark?
Lost my...
You're good tonight? Chuck? Connie?
Yes. Actually, I was approached at the chamber luncheon today by Judy Gianocchio, where she lives out in the Derby and her fence is falling down. Roots of the trees are showing. I have pictures. I had her email me the pictures and she wants to know what are we going to do?
Is that Derby Estates?
Derby Estates.
I don't know.
Same lady was...
It's the water that comes through off of the...
Tam Bark, Tam Bark or Tim Tam Trail.
She lives on the very back up there and the water comes right... She's the first one to get hit with the water.
Okay, so the exposed tree roots would be as a result of hot water.
Her yard's destroyed too.
Yeah, her yard is destroyed.
It's increased since the bypass and the state said the bypass has nothing to do with it, but it didn't do this until after the bypass was built.
No, she's lived there for years. But her fence is torn down.
From the water.
From the water and the brush and the water.
Is the fence in the flood or the drainage easement?
No, I don't think so. It's on the other side.
I know Kyle was talking about a lot of fences and stores built into in the drainage easement.
Same way with the electric company through Owen Electric and the...
That's on the other side of the street.
No, it comes up, she's at the hill and it comes right down into all that.
Comes right down into the back of her.
I understand that they're saying that it hasn't caused it, but if you think about the water on the other side of the bypass, it comes off the hills, it runs through the cover and underneath the road down into her property, there's where your issue is. It's not what's coming off this side. It's the whole farm on the other side of the road that's picking it up, shooting it down underneath of her. Now, they can go out there and measure what's coming down off this side. It's the other side of the road that's making the mess.
And before, she didn't have a big hole in the back of a tunnel under the road to allow all this water to rush.
All that to come right through and real fast.
Who owns the farm or the property on the other side of the road? Does anybody know?
Mr. Price, maybe?
I think you're right.
Who does?
Mr. Price. I was going Mr. Price, what's his first name? Tom.
Tom, yeah.
Tom Price. See Tom Price?
Yeah, okay.
But that's the main issue. It's not the water that's coming off the road on this side of her, by her property. It's the field on the other side and all that drainage is just picking it all up and shooting it straight through on her.
When we discussed this probably a year ago, we sent Kyle away to make some changes to the plan and rebid or get us fresh estimates. And he actually went through that exercise and tweaked the plan and got us an estimate that was some amount less, but it was still in excess of a couple hundred thousand dollars and we just...
That was just for that piece?
That was... It wasn't the big fix. That was a pretty small piece. And Kyle is off work today, or he would be here tonight. I can ask him to come to the next council meeting and update us on what that revised drawing looked like. And...
Why don't we do that and then ask, tell Judy and then ask the neighborhoods if they want to come back? Because they were all here for a couple meetings that we had.
Yeah. And we've had, like you said, we've done this over a year ago and I don't know exactly what's happened up to this point, but maybe we could stay the course and try to figure out something to do and fix it at this point.
Yeah.
It's not going away.
No.
Well, this is not going away, nor are the other massive storm sewer issues that we have. And always happy for those folks to come to the council and we'll get Kyle to update our information as well as we can. Ultimately, it's going to be up to us to figure out how we fund these improvements. And in my short term back in office, I've learned that the general fund will not support storm sewer improvements of this size or the much larger drainage basin issues that we have that will be millions of dollars. So we'll continue to do as much of this through our general fund revenue as we can. And I know that's what I'd like to do. I know that's what the council would like to do. But as we... As these problems get more and more expensive, it is going to begin to impact our ability to hire policemen, hire firemen, and do the other things that we really want our community to do. So yes, we'll work on this issue. And we'll fund... We'll get answers as much as we can. But there is a point in time when the general fund is not going to support repairs of this magnitude.
I guess my problem with this repair is that there was nothing wrong with it. And then when they put the bypass in, it became an issue. Whatever changes they did, whether if the Department of Transportation said they didn't do anything, somebody did something because it wasn't doing that before.
Yeah. And, you know, we certainly can't argue with somebody who's lived there and who saw it one way and now they see it a different way. But I've also read the engineering analysis and I'm not smart enough to argue with it.
Well, it's not complicated. You know, it's not about an engineering analysis. They can analyze it all they want. The bottom line is they moved the dirt and now they've got a problem. It's a human... It's figuratively, it's easy.
It is and it's easy. We can fix it as long as we can afford it.
Right. But thank you for...
And we'll...
But Judy's been very patient.
Yes.
Judy has been very patient.
She was very...
Of course, she'll miss it until you every time you see her, but, you know, she's been very patient.
But what she's afraid of now is because the trees, the roots are...
They're going to fall over?
They're going to fall over.
Yeah.
And the one in her neighbor's yard that she showed the picture to, it's half of it is up.
And some of the underground electric wires are starting to show now.
That was the expensive part of it.
From erosion of the dirt.
Yeah, and in fact, I forget the dollar amount of...
That's scary.
Those wires had to be relocated.
And that was at least a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll bring you back more. We will revisit that information again.
I like to revisit.
You too, Mary. Thank you, Connie. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Tom Warner, which is not Tom Warner anymore, but...
Spectrum.
Spectrum, which has been true to it all.
No, it's worth it.
There's some places in town that it's been out for several days and then there are some areas in town that they don't have, they don't have internet.
Give us lists and we'll... I've got a contact.
Okay.
Tell me where and how.
My business is so slow, I want to throw my computer.
Yours shouldn't be bad being downtown. But, you know, downtown blocks out a lot, as mine does too.
Today, I was trying to print off from my copier.
It does.
Yeah, I wanted to go punch somebody.
And there was out the window. Some pieces that we're beginning to put in place, a QX.net antenna on the water company building, which is going to allow us to get more robust broadband service to our building inspection, electrical inspection and code enforcement building in the water company. We also heard a lot when we were working on the Water Street Plan with all the students about how much they expected free Wi-Fi in Royal Spring Park. And by the way, if you're doing free Wi-Fi in Royal Spring Park, why don't you have it all the way up Main Street? And we've been listening to that. And we think we're just very close to getting free Wi-Fi in Royal Spring Park off this QX.net feed.
Good.
That's good.
And if we can...
We can go to Royal Spring Park and work, Connie.
When it's not raining, pull up a picnic table.
We'll just set up in our little office.
But as we put those pieces in place, eventually they knit together better.
That sounds good.
Anything else? Thank you. David?
I'm sorry.
Holly?
No.
I do, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to revisit, I think probably last year around March, I brought up, speaking of, since we were talking about community gardens, the opportunity to have a community garden possibly on some land that we might have and I'm hoping you or Andrew can help me with that in town, closer than out to Toyota, to where people can use that. And I sent copies of an ordinance. Recently, Lexington Fayette County government passed an ordinance encouraging the creation of community gardens and this law was designed to allow for the existence of what they term as a market garden in their city. I have a copy of the ordinance and sent it to the council and to the mayor. I'm proposing that the council investigate the implementation of similar legislation here in Georgetown. And this will likely require some steps. Hopefully, this council will approve the creation of a community garden and place it under a committee to ensure that the common... The community garden, excuse me, receive planning and attention. Hopefully, it's a success and possibly one could lead into another. I just think that we need, the city needs to hang on to its green space and encourage healthy lifestyle of growing and consuming homegrown fruits and vegetables for its citizens. So I'm hoping that there's something available, not that was on a place where we had a dump or had some, you know, an area that is healthy, that we own, that we could possibly create a community garden much closer than all the way out to Toyota, where people can walk to it.
Mayor, I have a thought. Just to throw out there, and we talked about it at the table today, is maybe over behind the Rock House, the peninsula area, you know, where that hundred-year flood plain should have never happened, but it did one time, what, in ninety-seven, I think? But that's a pretty fertile piece of ground that we were discussing closer to town. Just maybe an option.
Yeah. We'd be more than happy to get with our various department heads and see what suggestions they might have. I don't know why we need additional legislation to have a community garden and I will not be in favor of a committee to run it. If it's city property, we can set guidelines and I think we can do that better.
Just somebody kind of in charge to see, maybe not a committee, but somebody to kind of oversee it, so.
City, yes.
Would that work? I'd be glad to volunteer.
We can talk about a structure. I don't have a structure in front of me to react to right now, but we'd be happy to discuss that with you.
Okay. Like, you know, we need a plan on who plows it and what area and how much space each person would be allowed to use to grow, you know, their garden and things. Just little stipulations like that to try to figure it out for the amount of space that we might use and how many people might be interested in actually using that area, so.
Extension Office might be...
Yeah, that might be the one to do it.
Extension Office.
Yes, I wish she'd lay... I wish she'd stayed a little longer. Yeah, Virginia, yeah.
Mayor, in years past, we did talk about the peninsula, but I believe behind Taco Bell was another area. We talked about putting soccer fields back there. You know, when we took that land from Ernie Hannah, that was kind of an exchange that took place. But it is prone to flooding, which creates a little bit of problem.
But the peninsula does flood because of flood at last... Was it last year, year before last? That part that's closest to the creek, that does, but then when you get up on the hill...
And the road up, yeah.
But that part does flood. But you're right about the, down behind Taco Bell, we haven't used that for anything.
See, I don't know all the properties that we own.
So that would give you three pretty good spread-out locations somewhat reachable by foot.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Or horseback.
Anything else, Molly?
Mayor, I do have one more, one more thing I forgot to mention. David reminded me of it actually, is the walking trails, particularly the one that is behind the Colony, that's behind Colony, goes down to almost to Derby Estates back through there. It's in really, really bad shape, almost dangerous shape, but we're responsible for it. So it might be something whether we're going to clean it up or use it or we close it down or something, but it's kind of, it's kind of dangerous.
It's just grown up and hairy.
It's a, it used to be a lovely trail that went behind the Colony and along the creek and all the way down to Derby, to Derby Estates, but...
That's that wildlife management area.
But there were some bridges, bridges and things across it too. Well, they broke it down and it's really hard to find the trail and see the trail and it's kind of getting a little dangerous actually. If it's going to be a trail, you need to maintain it. If it's not going to be a trail, then it needs to be maybe closed off.
We'll ask if we can't get a progress report on that. Molly, was there anything else?
Could we do something? When you were talking about planting trees near the arts, the old jail where the Arts and Cultural Center is, that hill on the other side of the creek that goes up there, could we do a little something to help that along with planting half dozen trees or something up there kind of on the hill in April? Could we do that?
We'd be glad to look at it.
It just kind of needs something.
Sometimes sitting here, I don't have enough information or I don't have a visual.
Right, right. Just give it a look and see what you think.
We'd be glad to look at it.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Anything else, Molly?
Thank you.
Anything else, come forward, council.
Oh, thank you.
We will stand adjourned.
Where are you going?